The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for servicemen and women throughout the world and for all those who have passed away in our community during the past week and also the family of our stenographer Kathy Nardozzi on the recent passing of her grandmother.
Mr. Wexler?
Here.
Mr. Rogan?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. McGough?
Here.
Dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A Tax Assessors Results Report for Hearing Dates Held September 23 and 24, 2014.
Are there any comments, if not received and filed?
3B Tax Assessors Report for Hearing Date Held October 16, 2014.
Are there any comments, if not received and filed?
3C Audit Status Report from Robert Rossi and Company, received on October 9, 2014.
Are there any comments, if not received and filed? Any clerk's notes?
No, Mr. McGough.
Any announcements from council?
Yes, I have one. The popular event Bonfire at the Furnaces will be held this Saturday, October 18th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Scranton Iron Furnaces, 159 Cedar Avenue. Tickets are $15 in advance and $20 at the door. Tickets can be purchased in advance online at www.scrantonbonfire.com or at the Anthracite Heritage Museum. The event will include many activities for all ages. Thank you.
Let the record also show that Attorney Menorah was unable to attend tonight, but in his stead Attorney Pat Scanlon is representing Attorney Menorah. Also, I should have announced last week that the schedule for the showing of the council meetings on ECTV, since we're not able to do it live, they are being shown at the following times: Friday at 2:30, Saturday at 12 noon, Sundays at 8:00 p.m., and while we are at Lackawanna College, they will be shown on Monday evenings at 6:30 p.m. And what we're going to ask, we should have asked if ECTV will scroll this on Thursday evenings at 6:30-ish, just so people that would turn to see the broadcast would be able to at least see the schedule for the rebroadcast of it.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Sorry. Good evening, Council. Gerard Hetman for Lackawanna County's Community Relations Department. Good to see you as always. This evening, I'd like to go over a few specifics regarding the proposed 2015 Lackawanna County General Fund Budget, which in accordance with Lackawanna County Mural Charter was presented by the Commissioners to the public yesterday, Wednesday, October 15. To begin, the 2015 budget, which totals approximately $104 million, includes no tax increase in county real estate taxes for the 2015 fiscal year. So, the county bills rate will stay the same at 5.742 mils for 2015, and Lackawanna County residents of Scranton and all 40 municipalities in the county will not see an increase in their county property taxes for 2015. To go over some of the other specifics on the sheets in front of you that Ms. Reed provided. First, in terms of economic development, the 2015 budget will continue to fund some of the Commissioners' key economic development incentives, including our SBA loan fee waiver program, our construction permit fee waiver program, and our wireless initiative. Second, in the area of quality of life, the budget will continue to also fund the community reinvest program, the county park system, and all related activities, and also our arts and culture programming and grant opportunities. All those programs will continue to be funded at the same levels they are currently. Third, in terms of future savings, by completing the last three county audits on time and building a fund balance over the past three budget cycles, the county continues to move in a favorable direction in the eyes of credit rating agencies. This is important as the county seeks to restore its investment-grade credit rating, A for, of course, general good financial practices as always, and also specifically to eliminate the surveillance fee that is now imposed on county government as a condition of past borrowing. That surveillance fee presently totals approximately $1 million, and while there are provisions in the 2015 budget to pay that this year, eliminating that surveillance fee through the restoration of an investment-grade credit rating remains a key priority of the Lackawanna County Commissioners. In addition, the Lackawanna County Pension Fund continues to be funded at approximately 80%, and energy-saving upgrades of the Lackawanna County Prison will ensure future savings in future budget cycles in the area of prison operations. And lastly, one of the hallmarks of any county government in Pennsylvania, the area of Human Services, Lackawanna County was selected by the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services to participate in a pilot block grant program, which will allow the county Commissioners and Departments of Human Services in Lackawanna County to best direct funding to the areas that it's most utilized, best utilized and most needed by Lackawanna County residents. We hope to see again improvements, continuous improvements in the delivery of funding and the execution of services in the area of Human Services. The second sheet in front of you gives you some of the specifics regarding the hard numbers on the financials with this year's budget cycle. I won't go over the sheet, but it gives you a number of the facts and figures that go into various aspects of the budget. And I'd like to note that all these documents presented tonight, both of the ones in front of you, as well as the entire 2015 budget, are available in PDF format on the Lackawanna County website. Just visit lackawannacounty.org, and anyone can download again the two sheets you have here that give you this information, as well as the entire budget in PDF format. And with that in mind, we invite all county residents to attend one of the four required budget hearings that the Lackawanna County Commissioners will host to gather input, thoughts, and opinions from county residents on the 2015 budget process. Their dates and times are as follows: The first one, Wednesday, October 22nd, 11:00 a.m. at the Commissioners' Conference Room in the Lackawanna County Administration Building, 200 Adams Avenue, Scranton. The second is Monday, October 27th, 3:00 p.m. at the Jefferson Township Municipal Building, 487 Cortez Road in Jefferson Township. The third is Wednesday, October 29th, 6:30 p.m. at the German Borough Building, 440 Jefferson Avenue in German. And then lastly, Wednesday, October 29th, 8:00 p.m. at Dixon City Borough Building, 901 Enterprise Street in Dixon City. That is their new location, we should note. So, again, everyone's welcome to come and give their input on it. If any council members have questions on the budget process, I'll be happy to take them, and if it's one that I can't answer, we'll have our Revenue and Finance staff get you an appropriate answer as soon as we can. Are there any questions from council this evening?
I just want to ask, has ECTV been provided a schedule of the public meetings?
I can't say for certain, Mr. McGough. I know that they do also film our Commissioners' meetings.
Right.
In the past two years that I've been here, they have filmed and televised all of our budget hearings, so we will check with them as soon as we can to make sure that they have them, but it has been standard practice for us to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Faye Frannis, Scranton. With that parking meter, with that loan to the bank, how much of the parking meter revenue, what percentage, will be paid towards that loan?
There is no loan agreement as of yet.
You have no idea what kind of percentage?
There is no loan agreement yet, so we don't know. What we're voting on is to give approval for them to negotiate that loan.
Okay. Mr. Rogan? You were on council with Jack Loskam, Mr. McGough, Janet Evans, and Boyd Hughes, so it's a... Did you not, what did you think when Landmark Bank got this loan without council approval?
I don't think the loan should have ever been made.
So, why do you think it should be paid back?
Well, this vote specifically, I'm going to vote yes for because it only gives the authority to look into it. It will come back to council with the final vote, and that's something I'm...
That's next week, isn't it?
No, this would be, and we were talking about this earlier, what this would do, it would give the authority, it would give the city the authority to negotiate a loan, to deal with...
Why would you even consider that when you don't believe this loan should be paid back since it never came in front of council? Why wouldn't you say no right off the bat?
Well, I think it's something we need to take a look at.
Why?
Because part of, one of the problems the city's having is with the banking community.
No, no. They will get loans. They don't need this loan to be paid to get other loans. There's enough credit in there to get, don't use that for an excuse. That's just an excuse.
Well, no, and I agree that this loan was never backed by the city.
But it also, you're using this, and I've heard Wayne Evans tell me as well, that the reason they're doing this, one of the reasons is so the bank will have more credibility with the city and they'll want to get loans easier. That's a lot of crap. I was going over some minutes from this time period before, and after thorough investigation and research, Attorney Hughes, Boyd Hughes stated clearly and adamantly that Landmark Bank would never win the case in court and would have to eat the class because the city never guaranteed a loan. Mr. Bozoni, who represented the bank and the officers of the Parking Authority, circumvented city council and the required legislation. Now, if that doesn't, that money, that 2.9 million that Landmark Bank gave that loan that the city council didn't approve, that money could go to lower our taxes. This is totally unethical. I don't know if it's illegal, but I'll certainly find out. I mean, how a city council member knows that this didn't come in for the city council for a vote, and you're still going to consider paying them back when you don't have to pay them one penny? Boyd Hughes is a very intelligent man, and everything he said, I believe completely. And all of you up there are saying, "That's not true." It certainly is true. Have you to pay this loan back when you don't have to, especially when the people are getting taxed right out of their homes, and you're going to add more taxes because you're paying this loan that could have went to lower their taxes? And not just that, you're going to vote, you're giving administration raises? I mean, I don't understand it. When General Motors went under, the people that worked there took a pay cut to keep them afloat. You just, you don't see anything. I don't understand you people. All I can say is, I'll be back, and people will see what you're doing, Pat. Mr. McGough, we expect that from you because we know what you're doing. As far as the other ones, everyone should be ashamed of themselves to put more taxes on the people by granting this loan. There is nothing you can say that'll justify paying this loan when legally you don't have to pay this loan back, and that money, that almost $3 million, could go to lower our taxes, but you don't care. You just want to take care of your friends at the bank. Mr. Bozoni's the one that got that deal. I'm very surprised that the Scranton Times doesn't have big editorials on how this loan came about without council's approval. Why aren't there editorials in the paper about that? And whatever happened the day Bozoni, that he left Landmark Bank, why aren't there editorials asking those questions? Why did he get let go from Landmark Bank? I'm pretty sure it was because of that loan, because they know it wasn't guaranteed by the city. So, you're going to, you're going to vote to possibly pay that back when you don't have to, and that's $3 million the taxpayers don't have to pay more in taxes, but you don't care. You don't care about the people at all. I just hope that come Election Day, every one of you put their names down and never vote for them again, because none of you, if any one of you, every one of you that votes for this, you should be ashamed of yourself and you do not represent the people. You should hang your head.
Joan Hodawannas, Scranton. I'm going to say the same thing I've been saying every week. We still don't have a city audit for 2013, and the deadline on November 15th for the 2015 budget is coming within a month. I don't understand how we could have realistic numbers in a 2015 budget without benefit of an audit. And in regards to that, I have been going on a regular basis trying to catch Mr. Washo at the Scranton Parking Authority. One of the 23 items that are still outstanding to complete the city's 2013 audit is the audited financial statements of the Scranton Parking Authority for 2013. Now, I'm not as up to speed as Faye is with regards to this loan, but I will say that before we start looking at approving the issuance of a note for $4 million for the Scranton Parking Authority, even if it's going to be repaid by meter revenue, we need those 2013 audited financial statements to see what went on at the Scranton Parking Authority and how they are balancing their books. You know, if I went into a bank for a loan, I'm sure that I would have to give a certain amount of financial information to the bank so they would understand my financial status. So, why would we want to approve the issuance of a $4 million note with Scranton Parking Authority when we don't know what their books look like? You know, I mean, I keep trying to catch Mr. Washo. His audited financial statements for last year were due to Rossi and Company on April 15th, six months ago. Now, I don't know how he's going to rationalize not having it done, doesn't know how to do it, doesn't have the personnel to do it. If he has an excuse, he should have raised a red flag and said, "I needed help." But why would you approve the issuance of a $4 million note when you don't know the status of their books? That does not make sense, and you have a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayer, and that's a legitimate question you should be asking the administration, who should be asking Mr. Washo. Second topic, what's going on with Goodwill? Have they done anything in the building?
Not in the building. I know they were moving closer towards finalization of closing on having the building. I should have good news on that front within the next week or two, though.
Okey-dokey, now watch what you say.
I did speak to...
Because I get, I get the feeling that, you know, I'm going to see the second coming of Christ before I'm going to see this project finished.
I did speak to representatives from Goodwill two weeks ago, and they were very optimistic.
I thought that they got the approval that everything was hinging on, and...
That was...
...it was a beat ahead, right?
They received the approval for the HUD vouchers.
Yes, and what are they waiting for now?
I believe the closing.
Okey-dokey, and who's in charge of that? What's the holdup there?
I'm not sure. They didn't get into the details, but they did say we should hear something very shortly.
Yeah, well, let's hope they don't ever come back with hat in hand, because I don't think they deserve another penny. In fact, they should repay the city with interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to address council?
Good evening, Scranton City Council and everybody else. Bill Jackowitz, South Scranton. My question is, what's the cost of the four Pacmasters that the city's going to be purchasing, and where's the money going to be coming from? Does anybody have the answer to that?
I don't have last week's backup. I'm not sure what the cost was. It was at a very low interest, and I believe the money was coming from, to pay back the loan that we would take, was from excess liquid fuels, what the increase in liquid fuels would be.
Okay. If possible, can someone possibly research that a little bit further and get some numbers, some specific numbers for the citizens of the city? Also, the parking revenue. Do I understand correctly that we still don't have like a game plan for this loan and how we're going to repay it? Did I understand that correctly?
There is no loan. All we're doing is setting the parameters into, in which the loan can be negotiated.
I understand that, but sooner or later, the loan's going to be negotiated, and there's going to be a loan, correct? Is that what this is all about?
Yes, that's the purpose, but there is no loan agreement at this time.
Yeah, on October 16th, but what's going to happen in November 16th if we go ahead and get a loan? Is there a game plan in effect for how we're going to pay that back? Are we going to use 100% of the parking revenue?
That's what part of the negotiation of the loan involves.
Right now, okay. But the way things go in Scranton...
Mr. Jackowitz, I can't tell you what's going to happen November 16th. If I could, I'd be a millionaire.
Well, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, normally you have a long term, and you're, when you're making a plan, you have ideas of how you're going to pay it back. Now, someone has to know how we're going to pay this loan back. I would hope that somebody does.
That's what we're doing. We're setting the parameters, the meter revenue, what percent of it, we don't know. That is what needs to be negotiated.
Okay, when will the citizens find out?
When the loan is negotiated.
Okay, when it's negotiated and it's approved, and all of a sudden the citizens find out that they're deepening, and they're reaching in their pockets real deep, and they don't really have the money to repay it. Just like, that's why, that's why we've been distressed for 22 years.
Mr. Jackowitz, we can't give you an answer to something that doesn't exist.
Then why are we voting on it? You know, I mean, seriously.
We're not voting on a loan.
I understand that. You're voting on the opportunity to have, to propose a loan next month or two months from now. That's basically what you're voting on now. So, eventually, a loan is going to be made. We all know that. Everyone in the city knows that.
Hopefully, hopefully, yes.
Eventually, a loan is going to be made, and my question is, once that loan is made, how are we going to repay it? We're going to repay it with parking revenue, okay?
Exactly.
Well, the citizens need to know how much percentage of the parking revenue is going to be used to repay that loan. I think that's a very legitimate question, because there's thousands and hundreds of citizens asking that question.
Well, ask it when the actual loan negotiations are complete.
Well, then it'll be too late.
No, it's not too late, because that's when we vote on it.
Yeah, but we never get answers anyway.
You just don't accept them.
Okay, I spoke with Mayor Correia. Mayor Correia told me the reason why he didn't attend that meeting on Tuesday was because he was advised by his attorneys not to attend it, so that question was answered and resolved. You know, it was nice to hear that the county is getting itself on feet, back on their feet again. It seems like they're getting their audits done on time, there's no tax increases, they're paying their bills on time, so on and so forth. It'll be really nice when we can get to that point with the city of Scranton, because 22 years has been a long time going on. 23 years on January 10th, it'll be 23 years. Also, several citizens have approached me, and they wanted me to ask you all a question, but I'm not going to do that. But basically, what that question was, and if anybody wants to answer it during motions, it would be appreciated, could any of you live on $12,500 a year and pay your bills and pay your expenses? Because there's a lot of citizens, retired citizens, senior citizens who are older than I am, who are living on $12,500 a year or less, and they have to absorb these tax increases that seem to be, every year, we get one. So, that was the question that I was asked by several senior, senior citizens, whether or not city council could live on their $12,500 a year salary.
Good evening, Council. Dave Dobson, resident of Scranton, South Side. Last week, I pulled a slight boner. I said, "No loans," and what I really meant was that no one else for all these loans. They all have to come before council, and if they do not, and someone's bold enough to take that loan, then they should have to be dismissed from their duties and sent along. Because as I remember it, that parking garage on Washington Avenue, we fixed the facade. Well, everybody should remember what happened last winter, large chunks of concrete potentially falling on cars. So, once again, we put the cart before the horse. We have a nice facade and no functionality. I feel that the $4 million has to be repaid strictly because the banks have a lot of power over us. There's a really interesting commercial on television that a kid says, "Who's that, Daddy?" And he says, "Oh, that's our investment broker." And he says, "Oh, why is he not happy? He invests money for us." And he says, "Why isn't he happy? Does he have to repay you?" And he says, "No." And the kid says, "Why not?" And then he says, "Well, it doesn't work that way." And he says, "Well, why not?" So, the bottom line is, we lost $26 million in investments, and the banks walked away from that, but don't you dare owe them any money. Don't you dare. And on 7G, I have to question the timing of this. I've said it before, they seem to have a really poor mechanic plan down there, repair facility. Things don't get fixed. The local detective was complaining that it took 15 weeks or something like that, or 12 weeks, and he still hadn't had a motor mount put on his car, which is a state inspection item, by the way. And when I worked in a Lincoln garage, that job paid 1.3 hours. So, you know, if we're going to hand them bright and shiny new trucks and having them look like they've been through Iraq 15 times, maybe we don't need it. And I also have to be critical of the Parking Authority. Once again, they're the ones that are mentioned in the audit the most, and there is no excuse for these people not having their act together, even if they have to use a fudge factor or something, or say, "Gee, I just don't know what happened to this money and what..." Put the cards on the table. It's time, that's six months, I have to agree with Joan. Six months is too long, and it's gone on year after year after year. And the authorities are, once again, nothing more than a taxing, another taxing body. We have municipal, we have the school district, we have the county, we have the state, we have the federal government, and nobody, everybody just seems to pass the buck back and forth onto the next guy. It's really shameful. We have, I hate to keep harping on Act 76, but I just seen an anti-Tom Wolf ad blaming him for the taxes that will increase on Act 76. And it's like, you know, just for the insult, I don't think I'm going to vote for the other guy over that. It's an insult upon my intelligence to tell me that. Just lay the cards on the table and take responsibility for your actions. And once again, on this budget, how do you figure out a budget without knowing what went on last year? It's really, the audit has to come in, and it has to be on time. It's way past due. Thank you and have a good night. And one final thing, we will never, ever straighten Scranton out, is my prediction, until we take the state to court and make them replace the money for all the tax exempts. What they want to do is fine, but don't tell me I have to do it all the time. Thank you and have a good night.
Good evening, Council. Marie Schumacher.
Good evening.
First, just on principle, not because of the dollar amount, but I believe that 6A and B need to be modified to establish either a time limit, a deed registration, and a tax payment. Last year, I reported on a number of properties that I had been tracking, and over the period of five years, the lost revenue to the city because none of those things had occurred was well over $40,000. There's no reason for that to happen, and it's possible that it's only been added to it, but that should not be open-ended. Developers get these, and then they let them sit for years, and then they go in and file, and the city loses the money, and they come off like bandits. Now, to the real issue tonight, which is that authority to go ahead with that $4 million I'd like to show a hands of those of you who, geez, went back and read, actually read the lawsuit that Landmark filed, which is available on the Times website?
I did not.
Anybody? Okay. I would recommend that highly, so you really know what has been going on. I would recommend that highly, so you really know what has been going on. It is somewhat suspicious that the Correia administration selected a former employee of Landmark Bank, whose name is on many of the lawsuit exhibits, for their business administrator, and are now, the administration is now seeking to make that former employer 100% well at the expense of the taxpayers of the city. Property owners are being threatened with double-digit tax increases for the fourth, I believe, consecutive year. The taxpayers' pockets do have bottoms, you know. The mayor has gone on record regarding shared sacrifices to save the city. Why then are you hell-bent on plans to take more from the taxpayers and seeking give-backs from employees while making a 100% payment of a loan the city doesn't even owe? It's the Parking Authority's debt. Let them work it out. Putting a debt we do not owe ahead of all true debt holders is immoral. The lawsuit should proceed to settle this matter, and Landmark should be paid from the sale or lease of the Scranton Parking Authority assets, the parking garages, and not from the revenue of the city-owned parking meters. Any shortage in operating revenue where the parking meter belongs would have to be borne by the property owners. This transfer of city revenue to an authority is not proper or moral. This is yet another reason why the city must immediately, as in now, bring in an impartial mediator to sit down with all the debt holders to negotiate how much they will contribute to reducing the structural deficit if, in fact, the mayor is serious about shared sacrifice. Do you do realize that if this goes through, you are putting this one bank ahead of everybody else, your employees and your taxpayers? It's just plain not right. And I would like to read an excerpt from the 6 September 2012 Scranton City Council meeting. It is Mr. Hughes, Solicitor Hughes, speaking, who I believe is a well-respected municipal attorney. A letter was sent today by Attorney Galley on behalf of Landmark Bank, saying that they have a security interest in the contract, and they are going to file a lawsuit. They want a meeting with Attorney Kelly and myself. I reviewed the letter. I think the allegations are groundless on the basis that, first of all, when Landmark Bank lent the Parking Authority money back in September of 2011, council knew nothing about the loan. The only way that we were informed of the loan was by reading it in the newspaper, and what was pledged as collateral were the funds of the contract, not the contract itself. I believe for that loan to be made, if they had done their due diligence, they would have seen in this contract it could be terminated by either party in 30 days. That is long ago. As the contract remained in effect, the bank did have the security interest in those funds. It does not have security interest in the contract itself, which is what they are trying to imply. That by making the loan and not coming to council and seeking, or even telling council what they were going to do, why they were making the loan, and seeing an assurance... May I finish the last paragraph? Thank you. For council to amend the contract to state that as long as the loan was outstanding but would not terminate, it was never done. This was done behind closed doors. It was a cloak and dagger strictly between backroom dealing between Landmark Bank and the Scranton Parking Authority to make that loan, and they have no security interest in the contract itself. I summarily dismiss the letter as being unfounded. There is no basis for them to file a lawsuit. Council is fully within its rights to terminate the agreement, and to me, it's certainly folly to continue to let the Scranton Parking Authority continue to collect 10% of all the revenue from the Scranton parking meters, including any increased revenue that would come about because of the parking meter enhancement program, and it was awarded by the city, when the city needs this money to pay the obligations of Scranton Parking Authority. It should go to court. Thank you.
Anyone else?
You're looking for money for walk-on-a-station restoration. I believe we gave them money before when they were going to make that into a restaurant. How many times do we keep going to the well that keep feeding these projects that never get done? Now, Leonard's, Leonard's was a KOZ. We took it on the chin and gave them 10 years, I think about, maybe not the full 10 years, but close to 10 years, tax-free. They didn't have to pay taxes, which we paid for them. Now you're looking for another grant to put back into this project. KOZs don't work. They just don't work, because they wrote the law lousy. There's no question about it. I don't want to get into a big debate on the Parking Authority, but the Parking Authority is a defunct organization. You plan to bring them back to life, let alone... That's your doing. They're dead. The garages are being held by a receivership from the bondholders. They're the only ones that can lease it or sell them. The Parking Authority is negative. We were told this many, many times, and you were too. You all know. Anybody that came to meetings or sat on that board knew it. They're defunct. Why are you bringing them back to life? There's no reason for that. Would they need another lawyer? Is that what you want to do? Hire another lawyer? Give another guy a job? Or have money poured into that place so that he can use it? Forget it. The city is in trouble, like you pointed out. It's as plain as it knows on all of our faces. The city is in trouble. You've got to look for how to cut. I remember a few years ago, we went to New York and bought Pacmasters secondhand. I don't know how that worked out, but we did try to alleviate the cost of the Pacmasters. Those of you, I don't know if we were on, well, I don't know if any of you, Mr. McGough or Mr. Rogan were on council at that time, but that was done. They tried to hold the cost down. Mr. Dougherty tried to hold some costs down, but a lot of the other costs, he just shook his head and forgot about, and they piled in on us. If you remember when you, the council, your last time you were on council, when you took office, how many thousands of dollars, no, millions of dollars were we in debt? And that in turn caused all the escalation of the taxes. You're not doing what you were elected to do. There's no question about it. I mean, we paid some who used almost $100,000 to sit on council. Some used only $50,000. That's how much we paid you while you were sitting up there. And what have we gotten for our money? Nothing. Hot air. It's time for you to really buckle down and do what you were elected to do, and forget about all these other projects. We've got to have austerity. There is no question about it. You must have some kind of, when you're coming to your budget, it has to be very austerity. You've got to have it. Other than that, we're going down the tubes. The people, the people are really disgusted. Every time you go somewhere, they tell you, they must be telling you too. Not only me. I don't know why they tell me so much. I can't really do much, but speak a little. That's about it. But they should be calling you up and really keep on the line with these people and tell you, "We can afford more taxes. If we can buy Pacmasters from New York that are salvageable and will work for so many years, then that's the way to go." Some of the other things, it just, you're just piling on debt. And when it comes time for you to go before that judge, they ask for the commuter tax, he's going to see that you created most of these problems. You piled on the debt to make it look good when you come before that judge for the commuter tax, and he's going to see right through it, and we're going to be stuck with this debt. I'm not going to get too much more. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. Wexler.
Thank you, Mr. McGough. First of all, I'd like to apologize for my absence last week. I did have to make a visit to see my daughter in Indiana, so I do apologize for missing that. So, I didn't get an opportunity to thank Lackawanna College for allowing us to be here while our elevator is being fixed. I do really appreciate that, and it is a great setting to hold our meetings. In regards to some of the issues that have been spoken about tonight, our goal as a council when we came in in January was to help restore the financial house of the city. This debt that's overhanging our head, it is a blemish on our record with the financial community. And although we may not legally have to repay this loan, it is making it difficult for us to go out into the financial markets. And these are the type of things that we have been working on getting corrected, and we're starting to see some results on that. We are having more acceptance in the financial community, and that's what our goal has to be. And I know it's painful, and we may not have to pay this money, but I think it's an obligation that, as a city, we do have to repay and take steps to do that. That's all I have tonight, Mr. McGough. Thank you.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I'll be pretty brief tonight. I've had the pleasure all week of serving on jury duty, so I've been a little bit behind on some of my city council duties. Just two issues I wanted to address. The first is the Parking Authority debt issue. And as I mentioned earlier, I will be voting yes on this issue to allow the negotiation of an agreement. At that point, it's something that council has to take a long, hard look at. I agree with what some of the speakers have mentioned, that that loan should have never been issued. Or if the previous mayor wanted that loan, it should have came before city council, as every other loan the Parking Authority has taken out has. That is something that is very troublesome for me. At the same time, I do see the other side of the coin, what Mr. Wexler just mentioned and what others have regarding the banking community and the other negative consequences if the city chooses not to pay this loan. But this legislation is not to approve a loan. It is simply to allow negotiations to take place. And at that point, city council will have another vote, once a loan is, if there is a loan that's agreed upon, that will come to city council for another vote, and at that point in time, we will get to cast an up or down vote. Finally, regarding some paving issues, I know Councilman Gahan's going to address regarding a larger paving project that the city is working on for next year. Regarding this year's paving through OECD, I do know that curb cuts, handicap curb cuts in milling has begun, so you will be seeing that in a lot of the low to moderate income areas where we are allowed to use the CDBG funding for paving. Areas, again, areas outside of the low to moderate income, those federal dollars cannot be used. So that is all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Evans?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to give an update on the cell towers, zoning ordinance revisions. Don King, the city planner, has returned from a conference on this subject. Ironically, while he was there, he met up with the attorney from the Cohen Law Group, who happens to be the attorney representing the city in negotiations with Comcast. And he and his law firm are also experts in municipal law as it relates to cell towers and wireless networks. So Don is investigating to see if they can give us some assistance on this issue, and if they are under their existing contract, that's possible. So, a little bit more on that subject later. On the SBA ordinance, again, the payment of the outstanding loans to Landmark Bank and MBT, in my view, is part of the larger plan for the Scranton Parking Authority and for the solvency of the city of Scranton. But besides that, paying those loans just makes sound financial sense. In the broader picture, municipal government cannot exist or survive without the support of the financial community or our local banks. An example of that was a meeting that I attended on Tuesday morning with Council President McGough to discuss the 2015 Tax Anticipation Note, or TAN. Four banks were represented at the table, and another, an additional two or three are expected to participate. Does anyone think for a minute that as many as seven banks would be willing to participate on the TAN if the city allowed the default on loans to those two local banks? Also, I fully expect when the terms of that loan are negotiated, that this council will be voting on what those final terms will be and its impact on the revenue received through parking meter concessions or collections. Next week, I will be reviewing and taking a more comprehensive look, again, at pension reform. Thank you.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Rogan had just mentioned the 2014 fall paving program and the status of that. And I, this past week, I have received a few calls from people in some of these areas where the streets are getting paved, and they felt that it would be helpful if I read through the streets that are going to be paved, so I'll take a minute to do that. In West Scranton, Curtis Lane between Mount Vernon Avenue to Potomac Street, Sharon Court, the 1400 block, the 1400 and 1500 block of Thomas Place, Parkhurst Court, the 1300 and 1400 block, the 13, 14, and 1500 block of Manila Court, 900 block of North Garfield Avenue, 800 and 900 blocks of North Rebecca Avenue, and the 800 block of North Sumner Avenue, and that's in West Scranton. In North Scranton, we have Pawnee Avenue between Market and Oak Street, Stewart Court between Saltry Place to Pawnee Avenue, and the 1600 block of Church Street. In the Pine Brook section, we have Fordham Court, the 1400 block of Muncie Avenue, the 700 block of Marion Street, the 100 block of Large Street, including the intersection through Capous Avenue, 900 block of Penn Avenue, 1100 and 1200 blocks of Penn Avenue, the 900 and 1,000 blocks of Roach Court, that's the Pine Brook section. And finally, the Weston Fields section, Bartle Street between Albright and Barring, Cusset Avenue between Lawall and Bartle Street, Lawall Street between Albright and Barring Street, Ward Street between Albright and Barring, Foster Street between Albright and Barring, Barring Avenue between Lawall and Bartle, Grove Street between Albright and Seventh Avenue, and Cottage Avenue between Foster, past Grove to the end at the levee. So hopefully that helps the residents out in those sections. And the paving will be completed, hopefully, by October 31st. And finally, just a quick follow-up from my comments last week concerning the Act 47 reform legislation. The legislation passed both the House yesterday and Senate this morning, and is now on its way to the governor for approval. There were recent amendments to the bill that will affect Scranton's options moving forward, specifically with the 2015 budget. As I mentioned last week, there are equal treatment provisions in the bill. This means that Scranton cannot levy an earned income tax solely on commuters. The EIT tax would have to be levied at least equally on residents. Prior to this legislation, the city would have been able to petition the court through Act 47 to levy a commuter tax on nonresidents, as we tried to do once successfully in 2012. This bill, however, does not allow that. You must levy it on both residents and nonresidents, and the same applies for the Act 205 pension tax. If the administration decides to petition the court for an Act 47 EIT increase on both residents and nonresidents, we would not be allowed to increase the LST tax. And that is an amendment that just was put in, I believe, last night or a few days ago. If the city decides to enact the Act 205 EIT increase on both residents and nonresidents in order to help fund the pensions, the city would only be allowed to increase the LST tax to $104 a year, not $156. The LST increase would be subject to court approval each year, and that was an amendment that was put in recently. If the city decides to forego an increase in the EIT by either Act 47 or Act 205, then they may increase the LST tax to $156 a year. And again, that increase will be subject to court approval every year. And as I mentioned last week, a part of the bill that affects Scranton is, it allows for the business privilege and mercantile tax to be abolished in favor of a payroll preparation tax. So just an update on that, and that is all I have for this week. Thank you.
Do you have that on the pack?
Oh, yeah. Where the heck did I put it? There. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I did misspeak on the payments for the Pacmaster. Mr. Gahn had some information that the... Mr. Gahn had some information that the, let me just go through it so I don't misspeak again. The lease of the PACMAsters would be at 3%. The payments would be at $145,000 annually until 2016. The payments, the repayments of the loan would come from the energy management lease, and when that, when that matures, which is in 2016, then we'll have, or, excuse me, when that matures, then we will have a single payment rather than a double payment. But it was the thought to lease these because of the very low interest rate that was being offered through MAC Trucks, that it was well within, within our ability to pay, and also very much needed for the DPW to, you know, to actually perform the services that we Thank you on that. Where I misspoke, we are also pursuing and receive notice that we, that a loan application that we did put in for, through the Pennsylvania Transportation Infrastructure Bank, or PIB loan, it's being recommended that that loan be granted to the city. That is at, again, a very reasonable rate, 10 years at 1.6% is the recommendation. The amount of the loan would be two points, a little over 2.2 million, and it would be dedicated to road resurfacing throughout the city. I believe it's anywhere from 12 to 15 miles of road within the city. And it is that loan that would be repaid through the Liquid Fuels account. I just mixed up the two of them earlier. And then lastly, as far as the parking authority debt, I spoke on that before, and we have, it should be noted that that was in court, and that the, it was recommended to both sides that this be settled out of court. That recommendation came from the judge. It was thought by the attorneys representing the city that we potentially could have lost that court case, and the potential cost, additional cost would have increased that dramatic, the amount that we would pay dramatically. And it was felt that the best way to pursue this was through negotiations, and that's what we're doing. And that's all. Thank you.
5B for introduction and ordinance, sale of taxed delinquent property more commonly known as corner of park and terrace, Scranton, Pennsylvania. Tax map number, as noted, to Thomas J. Kane and Mary M. Kane, 95 Linwood Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18505, for the consideration of $1,000.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, and so moved.
5C for introduction, a resolution ratifying and approving of the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton on behalf of Akshar Lackawanna Station Hospitality to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant pursuant to the Pennsylvania Racehorse Development and Gaming Act in the amount of $2,500,000 for the project to be known as Lackawanna Station Restoration Scranton Project located in Scranton, Pennsylvania, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials of the city of Scranton to accept the grant if successful and execute and enter into a local share account grant contract and commitment letter with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to accept and utilize the grant in the amount of $2,500,000 awarded by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for such project.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, it should be noted on these that this is not the city that is asking for a grant. This is, we are merely approving the ability of someone else to apply for these grants through that gaming, the share, local share account grant. Should also be noted that for any of these that are approved, that the city receives, was it 5% of the?
5%.
The dollar amount goes to the city for any of these grants that are approved. So it, they are in, it is in the best interest of the city to look into these and to, to work with the, the individuals or the corporations that are applying for these grants. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and so moved.
5D for introduction, a resolution ratifying and approving of the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton on behalf of Scranton LTILP, 335 Adams Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18503, to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant pursuant to the Pennsylvania Racehorse Development and Gaming Act in the amount of $615,000 for the project to be known as Leonard Theater Adams Avenue Project located in Scranton, Pennsylvania, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials of the city of Scranton to accept the grant if successful and execute and enter into a local share account grant contract and commitment letter with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to accept and utilize the grant in the amount of $615,000 awarded by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for such project.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and so moved.
5E for introduction, a resolution, amending resolution number 174-2009, entitled authorizing appointment of the city of Scranton's representatives to the Tax Collection Committee pursuant to Act 32 of 2008 by replacing the current delegates, who are no longer employees of the city of Scranton, with current employees in the Business Administration Office.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title file of the council number 51-2014, and ordinance, sale of taxed delinquent property more commonly known as 540 North Rebecca Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania. Tax map number, as noted, to Arnold Domes Jr., North Rebecca Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18504, for the consideration of $650.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
I move that item 6A pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and so moved.
6B, reading by title file of the council number 52-2014, and ordinance, sale of taxed delinquent property more commonly known as 532 Prescott Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania. Tax map number, as noted, to James Smith and Denise Smith, 528 Prescott Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18510, for the consideration of $1,500.
You've heard reading by title of item 6B. What is your pleasure?
I move that item 6B pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and so moved.
6C, reading by title file of the council number 53-2014, and ordinance, approving the issuance of a note by the Parking Authority of the city of Scranton in a maximum aggregate principal amount of $4 million to finance the 2014 project, authorizing the pledge of the city's on-street meter revenues as security for and source of payment of the Parking Authority's 2014 note, authorizing the execution of the pledged documents, authorizing the mayor and officials of the city to take other appropriate action, providing for the effectiveness of this ordinance and the severability of certain provisions and repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts of ordinances.
You've heard reading by title of item 6C. What is your pleasure?
I move that item 6C pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, file of the council number 50-2014, creating and establishing special city account number, as noted, entitled Liquid Fuels, for the receipt and disbursement of those funds received for this purpose.
What is the recommendation of the chair for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahan?
Yes.
Mr. McGough?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, resolution number 87-2014, accepting a donation of $1,250 presented to the city of Scranton Fire Department from Geisinger Blood Center.
What is the recommendation of the chair for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question, certainly, we would like to thank the Geisinger Blood Center for their generous donation to the Scranton Fire Department. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahan?
Yes.
Yes, I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, resolution number 88-2014, ratifying and approving of the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton on behalf of the Scranton Cultural Center at Masonic Temple to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant pursuant to the Pennsylvania Racehorse Development and Gaming Act in the amount of $1,017,975 for the project to be known as Scranton Cultural Center at Masonic Temple Building Restoration Project located in Scranton, Pennsylvania, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials of the city of Scranton to accept the grant if successful and execute and enter into a local share account grant contract and commitment letter with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to accept and utilize the grant in the amount of $1,017,975 awarded by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for such project.
What is the recommendation of the chair for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahan?
Yes.
Yes, I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, resolution number 89-2014, ratifying and approving of the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton on behalf of Lackawanna College to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant pursuant to the Pennsylvania Racehorse Development and Gaming Act in the amount of $1 million for the project to be known as expansion of academic programs and community health projects at Lackawanna College located in Scranton, Pennsylvania, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials of the city of Scranton to accept the grant if successful and execute and enter into a local share account grant contract and commitment letter with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to accept and utilize the grant in the amount of $1 million awarded by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for such project.
What is the recommendation of the chair for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Wexler?
Aye.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahan?
Yes.
Yes, I hereby declare item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
7A for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for adoption, resolution number 90-2014, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept the gift of a 2003 Freightliner PACMASTER VIN number, as noted, from the Scranton School District to the city of Scranton Department of Public Works.
What is the recommendation of the chair for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7E.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahan?
Yes.
Yes, I hereby declare item 7E legally and lawfully adopted.
7F for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, resolution number 91-2014, appointing Robert Gatens, 528 Orchard Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18505, as an alternate number two member of the Board of the Zoning Appeals for the city of Scranton. Mr. Gatens is filling the unexpired term of Joseph Gilhuli, who resigned on July 25, 2014. Mr. Gatens' term will expire on July 1, 2015.
As chair for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7F.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahan?
Yes.
Yes, I hereby declare item 7F legally and lawfully adopted, and congratulate Mr. Gatens on his appointment.
7G for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for adoption, resolution number 92-2014, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a government obligation contract between Kansas State Bank of Manhattan and the city of Scranton, Pennsylvania, for the purchase of four 2015 MAC GU 813 refuse packers for the Department of Public Works.
What is the recommendation of the chair for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7G.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, just on the question. I'm voting yes for this. In my conversations with our DPW director, Dennis Gallagher, this equipment is sorely
Roll call, please.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahan?
Yes.
Yes, I hereby declare item 7G legally and lawfully adopted. If there is no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting is adjourned.